Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this work session. I'm going to get us started promptly tonight. We are talking for, we have an hour to talk about the Richfield Tourism and Promotion Board Agreement, and I will pass it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to recognize that we do have tonight our TPB President Vazeki and Executive Director Katie Epler and new board member Lisa Rudolph. And if you have any questions as we go along, you can certainly ask them. So, this is the history and structure. Our agreement and structure with our TPB has been in place for over thirty years.
Could I just take a pause quick? Could you just review the scope of the work session and are you going to go through all of that first before we dive in?
Sure.
And the role that the folks here from our TPB will play and what you need from us tonight?
Sure.
Cool, thanks.
So, I, basically tonight, I'm just giving you an update on where we're at, the current structure, some of the research that I've done. We all agree that we, you know, it's been thirty years and that an update is needed, and I will share with you the research that I've done, also my recommendations for what we need to incorporate into the, an updated agreement that will bring current best practices into the agreement and the structures. And then to, what I'm seeking tonight from the council is that you're okay with those recommendations and my approach, and then we would set up a meeting with City Attorney Tejan and President Vazeki and Executive Director Katie Epler and get that started.
Thank you. And can you just share the role of the folks here from our TPB? It's, they'll be answering questions if the council has questions, correct?
The council has questions, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, our current structure is that the agreement, it's, like I said, it's thirty years old. We all agree that it needs to be updated. It's funded by a three percent lodging tax. Minnesota law permits the city to levy up to three percent in a lodging tax, and it funds local convention or Tourism Bureau. We have a tourism bureau. And our local bureau is the Richfield Tourism and Promotion Board. Currently, that's governed by a five-person board. It was, it was five people, and then with Motel Six moving out of town, we now have a new citizen representative, which is Lisa. This is the current structure. We have an agreement with our TPB, that's the agreement that's, dates from nineteen ninety, that governs our relationship with them and provides a general scope of services. Our TPB then has their bylaws, and that spells out their procedures. We believe that by updating this agreement, we can, again, bring in best practices, more current language in the agreement, and also better align the structures. It also comes at a really good time. Richfield is experiencing Renaissance. There are more opportunities to promote Richfield and our tourism industry. You know, we really want to get folks to visit, to stay, to dine, and to play. Since, since Katie's been on board, they've done some new promotions, and they've been really successful. Oops, sorry, I went too far. And they're reporting, you know, lots, lot more social media traffic. They've surpassed their twenty nineteen goals already. Parks and food are, are big interest generators, and then the restaurant guide. So, there is interest out there, and folks are responding to these new promotions. So, in preparation of updating the agreement, I collected some information from other tourism boards, and I was able to get information from five of them. And there are some inconsistencies with our current agreement and structure, and some of that is, they all have city representation on the board. While our, our staff regularly attend the meetings, we are not voting members. They also have more citizen and business representation, and, and we do have one citizen representative now, but before that, we didn't have any. Actually, originally, it was just the three hotels, and then they added a chamber representative, and I'm not sure of the exact date of that.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five, thank you. Also, the other tourism bureaus don't directly reimburse hotels for their expenses, with some really minor exceptions, like up to a thousand dollars for like a promotion campaign or a transportation grant, again, for, for small amounts of money. They also have regular, most of them had regular review and expiration dates, some didn't. And they have a clear scope of services in reporting. So, based on that, I hope to incorporate these into a new agreement. I, I think that, I think that that could be helpful, again, in bringing in best practices. So, these are some of the things that I would like to put in. It's a regular review and expiration date, you know, we don't want to go another thirty years. Much more specific scope of services and include goals and progress, progress indicators. Also, bring our board more in line with other convention and tourism boards. And then also to bring our two governance documents into better alignment so that we can include the RTPB board structure in our agreement and the appointment, the recruitment and appointment process.
City Manager Rodriguez, I have a question. Could you go back to the last slide, please? So, those are coming directly from what you saw in other, other boards, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Some of them were consistent among all of the other convention and visitor bureaus, but some of them are, some of them are better than others. Like, there's some agreements that were really good about putting in their scope of services and including goals and progress indicators, so.
Councilmember Whalen.
Just a clarification. When you say city representation, was that like, kind of like the HRA where a council member is on that as well, or is that like city staff, or some of both?
Some of both.
Okay.
What was most common was having a city staff person, a city staff liaison, and then an elected representative. The St. Louis Park was an exception in that they, they're housed within the chamber, and so they have the same board, they're same, they share a board, basically. And they had one, they had the city manager, and then they had the superintendent. So, they did not have an elected official, but others do.
Councilmember Garcia.
Well, I think the second bullet is very, very important, so I want to make sure that we, you know, because we need to know the specific scope of services, you know, and, and then we need to know how we're doing and how you're measuring that, and that would be good.
Yes.
So, I'm glad that's in there.
Thank you. And then, like I said, I'd like to include the structure, the board structure, and the recruitment and appointment process, just really clearly in the agreement. Right now, it's in the bylaws, the RTPB board structure, but it is not in our agreement. So, just aligning our governance documents better. And then to develop and include a process to work with the city liaison on the annual work plan, and then financial and performance reporting requirements.
Good.
And I, I can pause there if there's any other suggestions on any of that. So, again, tonight, what I'm hoping to get is the consensus on my approach on all of this. And then the next steps would be to have a meeting with our city attorney and our TPB to update the agreement, and then we'd be incorporating the suggestions.
Councilmember Supple.
So, how does that process work? Is, do they have to update the bylaws after we come to an agreement about what we're going to do, or how would we go through that process to update the agreement?
So, we would meet with them and tell them that we, these are the things that we'd like to see, and if, if we do change the structure, they would have to update their bylaws. That's correct.
Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you remind us the possible timeline of this process?
Yes. So, we can give, either party can give ninety days' notice before January first and terminate the agreement. You can terminate with, by cause, if there's some cause, with thirty days' notice. But if we, you know, it'd be great if we got it done by January one, but if we're both agree that we want to update the agreement, we can do it at any time.
Councilmember Troutman.
Thanks, Mayor. I think one of my, one of my bigger concerns of this process is that, one, one, the length of time that it took to, to come to this process, this was a meeting that was noticed more than a year ago, and for a number of reasons, it's taken more than a year just to, just to begin this conversation. And I think part of the problem is that we appoint these board positions wholly separately from how we appoint every other board member that we have. Every, so we, we point a lot of boards, a lot of commissions, some are independent, independent organizations, and we have an interviewing process, and it's been a nonpartisan process, it's been a thorough process, and so one of, and I'd be curious to know what my colleagues think about this, but it seems like one of the ways to address a lot of the other concerns is to bring this board into alignment with, with our, our other board appointment processes.
And could I just ask, before council members respond to that, was it, was that a part of your review, and can you share what other cities do with that?
So, I did not ask other tourism boards about their recruitment process, but it, because we have such a robust process that's already in place, and we generate so many good applicants, I would, I would recommend that we keep that for the citizen appointments. And I would recommend that, based on the other agreements that I saw and the structure that I saw, that we are very clear in naming the city representation. So, in other words, many of them would say city manager or their designee and mayor or their designee, so being very clear about that in the agreement.
Feedback from council members on that item that Councilmember Troutman asked about? Councilmember Whalen.
I think that makes sense, that there's already a process, and it's, it's worked well for other groups. The one complication I can picture, and I, I don't know if I have a strong opinion either way, but just knowing that our current citizen representative, Lisa, one of the, I think, benefits is that she is also on the, the Community Services Commission and that connection with recreation, so I guess I'd, we just need to iron out if someone could be applying for multiple positions if we did go through that same process.
That's a good point. Councilmember Garcia.
Well, the other thing is, when we, if we recruit for the tourism board, I think it should be, we should have a set, some set goals of what, you know, we, we just don't want to recruit the way we do normally. We want people that are more in the know about, you know, about business and about the city tourism, the whole works. So, we want, we want to include business people that are actually, well, my idea would be that they lived in Richfield, but we can't always have that, but at least that they do have a business and they're very, and they're very much part of the community.
City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I tried not to get completely prescriptive about the whole process, but, about the additions, but some of the tourism boards are very prescriptive, and they include, and it's chamber representatives, and so, you know, the chamber representatives are from the, from the business, from restaurants.
Right.
Some of them have a representative from a nonprofit in town, so, I, but I do think that all, the other tourism boards have more robust representation from the general business community.
Other comments from council? I would say I am in agreement with making this a part of our appointment process that we already use. It's an extremely strong process, it works very well, we get amazing applicants, and then just doing that research, as Councilmember Whalen said to say, to look at if, if folks could be on multiple boards in this situation and how prescriptive or not we'd want to be, but that's all stuff that would be taken care of in the research aspect. Councilmember Garcia.
Well, one of the things, too, is like, would the Chamber of Commerce appoint, they appoint their own person, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Supple.
I think it was really helpful to know what's going on as standard practice around the metro and other cities, because I think that that's, it sounds like there's pretty much kind of a consensus in other areas, and that helps to make these decisions. I think a lot of the decisions that would bring us into the same type of structure as some of the other boards would be good for the tourism board.
Councilmember Whalen.
I guess one other thing I'm thinking of, and, and maybe this fits into kind of the, the clear scope of services and reporting, maybe I'll phrase it as a question. In the reporting, has that in other cities included, just thinking of with some other groups in town that we occasionally have like joint meetings and get like, or a report on kind of what they've been up to, and just kind of to create a more collaborative approach, is that kind of what that bullet point is getting at?
Yes, and I would like to, I mean, already, there's a requirement to report annually on the, on the finances, but to, we're going to work, you know, collaboratively, collaboratively develop a work plan, but also have performance indicators in that. And, and I just want to, I guess I should, should have started with this. You know, the, the tourism board is doing really good work, and the members are doing good work, it's just, I feel like giving them more best practices will just put more tools in the toolbox, and it's just a really opportune time to do that. So, I, I'm eager to have those conversations with them to see what we can put together as a work plan, and I put in the staff report about the U of M's study to do a tourism assessment, and I think, you know, the findings from that could really help inform all of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Whalen.
Yeah, I was just going to follow up. I think, I think in general, it seems like a lot of, a lot of groups in town have kind of been operating on their own, and so, to me, this seems like an opportunity to, to do all of those things and also to kind of build in more collaboration. And I specifically thinking of, in my mind, would make sense to have the, the tourism board at least aware of and connected to the, like, the goal-setting process, the strategic planning process, that it, that their work is not disconnected from the rest of the work we're doing as a city.
Councilmember Troutman.
I think this is, this is maybe the most delicate part of the conversation, but right now, the majority of the board are hotels, and the hotels receive a lot of reimbursement from the lodging fee. And so, if our city attorney, Tejan, has some concerns, not whether it's lawful or not, but whether this is a best practice, there's, there's an inherent conflict of interest in asking a board member, do you want to continue to receive reimbursements for your marketing expenses? And so, that, that gives me a little, a little concern because there's more than three hundred thousand dollars in that operating account. It would be, I would think it would be, I would be shocked, and I don't think anybody would, would do this. I don't, I don't have any reason to think anybody would do this, but potentially, the board could change the bylaws, and, and then they would, they would take that tax money, and we wouldn't have access to that. So, as we go through this process, it would be nice to know that we have, as we're going through that process, there wouldn't be any attempt, because there is, there is a financial interest in not changing the practice, that we would have some assurances that that, that wouldn't in fact be the case, there'd be no bylaws change while we go through this process.
If I could point out one, just a little, oh, I'm sorry.
Here we go, Gordon, if you want to use this one.
Apologies, just to avoid a misunderstanding, we, oh, sorry, Gordon Vazizki, President of the Richfield Tourism Bureau. So, just to avoid a misunderstanding, there is no direct payment made to hotel property. So, the bylaws right now currently specify that there is the ability for a hotel property to identify a marketing opportunity that if approved, can be paid by the Tourism Bureau to the vendor. So, one example of that is, there is a billboard that's right behind Assumption Church. That billboard right now is essentially sponsored by or being used by Four Points Sheridan. The Sheridan Four Points is contracted for that billboard. They provide that invoice as evidence of a marketing opportunity. At any point, the board can deny payment of that invoice, but those dollars do not directly go to Sheridan Four Points, they're paid directly to Assumption Church in this case as the vendor.
Thank you. Yes, City Manager Rodriguez.
I, I understand what you're saying, but it is, it is an expense that is directly benefiting one hotel, and based on the research that I collected, the kind of spending that they're doing, the other tourism boards is the, is general, it's to benefit the whole tourism industry, and it's not specific for a hotel.
Right.
So, there is a difference.
I was just, wanted to clarify Councilmember Troutman's observation or, or belief, lest the, it persist inaccurately, that there is a direct payment that's being made to the hotel properties. There is not a direct payment being made to the hotel properties, the payment is being made to the underlying vendors. And the other issue that makes us slightly different relative to the board suddenly deciding to change bylaws and abscond with dollars, or abscond with dollars without changing the bylaws, we are required to be insured from an errors and omissions perspective, directors and officers insurance that ensures directly the city's risk should something like that happen. There's an arm's-length relationship because it's not a political body. It's a body that's really driven by a desire to promote Richfield and promote hospitality within Richfield.
Thank you.
If I could just respond real.
Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the bylaws are clear, that it's both direct and indirect financial benefit that is prohibited. And so, I, I appreciate you acknowledging that it's an indirect benefit, but my concern is that indirect benefit creates a conflict of interest. I leave it to my colleagues to see if they share that concern, but I think at a minimum, it creates bad optics for our community when we represent, like you said, that we're serving the entire community. However, there's a billboard that's sponsored for the benefit of one hotel, and so we could call that not a direct, but I appreciate the clarification, it's not a direct payment, but I think it still creates a concern with the bylaws as written, and it creates an appearance that's not excellent.
So, I would like to just make sure that we, within the scope of our study session today, I don't think that this is an answer, that a question that is going to be answered right now. Is this a part of our process as a city with our city attorney looking into this?
Mayor, yes, and I, you know, certainly, we can, we can discuss that issue. I know that there's been some behind-the-scenes discussion about this question and issue, and maybe some differences of opinion relating to it, but I, I think that we can sit down, talk about it, decide whether anything needs to change with respect to that language, and I, I trust that we can, that we can have a good conversation about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Well, it would have been great, I'd like, I'd like to, I've never seen the bylaws, and I've never seen any financial records, so I'd like to see that, you know. Now, before, the city lodging tax, it's three percent. Who, who rated it at three percent? The tourism board?
No. It's a state statute.
Oh, it's a state, okay, good. Okay, so.
You might have done it for us back in the, the day.
You, you never know. I would have shot for four percent. But anyway, you know, it's, it's a good idea to see the whole package, you know, the bylaws and the, and the financials of it.
City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I did send the twenty eighteen audited financial statements out today, so, I'm sorry, I should have put them with the original staff report, but.
And I, I want to go back, so, when you reviewed what the ask was from council, the ask, I want to go back very specifically to making sure that we get that to you, and then you clarify exactly what the next steps are. So, you had some recommendations, you wanted to check from council if that was where council members are interested or in agreement with what your recommendations and findings are, and then your next steps, which are these two next steps? So, working with the city attorney and the tourism board to update the agreement based on the research that you found and incorporating these, these suggestions into the agreement. Do you have a comment? Oh, so, I guess I would like to ask council members if, where they are at with those recommended next steps and the recommendations, and then the next steps for moving forward. Councilmember Supple.
I think that the recommendations are good, things like reviewing it periodically and adding the different members, and knowing, you know, what the progress indicators are, those are all good practice, so I'd be in favor of that.
Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you. I'm also in favor, and yeah, I think, not that we should always just do what every city around us is doing, but I think in this case, it clearly creates a, a stronger agreement, a more transparent process for the, the public to see where public dollars are going and to know that they're benefiting the, the city as a whole. So, I, I think, I appreciate the work that's already been done and think the, the process laid out sounds great.
Councilmember Troutman.
I think, I think they're good recommendations and trust our staff to, to work them out.
Councilmember Garcia.
Okay, so, how do you determine how that money is spent? The, the money we get from the tax?
So, right now, from this Gordon Vazizki, Chair of the Tourism Bureau, right now, the way that it ends up working is the, the three percent is levied, it's collected by the hotels, remitted to the city. The city takes a five percent handling fee, pays ninety-five percent of the funds that are collected to the Tourism Bureau to spend in accordance with the current agreement. The current agreement is, is even from my perspective, too vague, because there are certain activities that tourism does now in supporting community events like the Fourth of July that aren't clearly contemplated. The focus of the underlying agreement is heads in beds. It is to maximize occupancy, and the agreement exists, based on the way it's currently written, for the benefit of the hotel properties. It was money that was lobbied for specifically by the hotel properties at the time that it was created, and it was earmarked funds for that purpose. So, that's the agreement that we've been operating under, and right now, we, I guess, do our darndest as volunteers to make sure we're doing everything we can to operate within that agreement. So, you know, there've been a, a number of things that happened, or that have occurred over the time period that have let us promote the city, and roughly, so between sixty-five and seventy percent of what we're spending is online presence, we have a part-time executive director, Katie Epler, general promotion, and a relatively small portion of our budget, sub-twenty percent, is marketing opportunities that are identified by individual hotels, and really let what would otherwise be an orphan of hospitality, we only have three. And until developers build more, there aren't more tax dollars to spend in promotion of it. We, from a tourism board perspective, would love to have additional hospitality options along the four ninety-four corridor. You know, unfortunately, based on what we currently have along the four ninety-four corridor, that presents some really challenging decisions, given the amount of housing we have in that space. But we would dearly love to have more hotels because- But we would dearly love to have more hotels, because essentially, it would provide Richfield more of an economic platform to be, to promote itself.
Sure. Well, I would, you work closely with Neil?
So Neil attends quite a number of our meetings. Katie's at, at virtually all of our meetings. You know, today, present circumstances dictated otherwise.
Right.
Turns out there are bigger things going on. So, yeah, there's, there's active city participation, active city input, to Katie's point. Right now, it's a non-voting input. I, you know, the, I don't think there's any issue making that a voting input. I, I don't fundamentally think there's a disconnect in the desire to promote our community.
Thank you, Mr. Waziski. Thank you to Katie, oh, Neil.
Yeah, just a second, just to weigh in just a little bit. So I've obviously not been affiliated with the board for more than a couple of years since I've been with the city, but they have worked with me on several pretty big initiatives. They've allowed for, we've had conversations in here before about, you know, we have a very finite amount of money that we spend, that we can spend on communications as a city. And when it comes to, you know, the bigger, like, uppercase P promotions of the city, probably one big campaign would probably, I'd run out of money, and I probably wouldn't even be able to pay myself. And on two, well, over the past two years, we've done two separate, pretty large-scale campaigns that really, based on all the metrics that I've seen, have really brought people to the city. Both, most recently for the Fourth of July, I was at several Fourth of July events, and I had people that heard our radio ads that were paid for 100% by those guys, by Tourism Board, that had seen, that had seen Facebook ads, all the things that had been paid for. And then last year, at the same time, we also did a Best Burb campaign around the hottest housing market and the best suburb voted by city pages. And billboards, everything like that, with the exception of staff hours, were all paid for by the Tourism Board. And I would not, I'm just saying, for us right now, I wouldn't be able to do something like that without, you know, their assistance.
Absolutely. City Manager Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I have the text of the, of the, of the statutes in front of me, and it's 95% of the gross proceeds from any tax imposed under subdivision one shall be used-
Can you speak directly to the microphone?
Oh, sorry. Shall be used by the statutory or home rule charter city or town to fund a local convention and Tourism Bureau for the purpose of marketing and promoting the city or town as a tourist or convention center.
Thank you.
Now, if a person, oh, Mayor.
Go ahead. Councilmember Garcia?
Okay, have we met?
Now we have.
Okay, now we met. If this, if someone wants to look at our Tourism Board, you have a website, or, do you?
That's correct. Visit richfield.org.
Okay.
Oh, .com, I'm sorry. Thank you, Katie. Visit richfield.com.
Okay, okay.
I, I live here, so I don't often, you know.
And, and that, is that website, could that be also part of the, of Neil's?
They're separate. They, they have a very nice website, theirs is-
No, no, but I mean, can, can our, our information transfer to them? I mean, you know, so, so that they, we're linking both of them together.
Yep, and we do, we do do that now for like, the urban hometown, Urban Wildland Race, Red, White, and Blue Days. We, we do a lot of cross-promoting on those. They also have social media platforms as well, Facebook, Twitter, and they recently started Instagram account. And, you know, we do a decent amount of sharing. We stay away on the city side of promoting direct businesses, because, you know, that becomes somewhat of a conflict of interest. But, you know, general stuff, when they promote our parks, or we promote our stuff, you know, they're, they're very good about throwing that information out there as well.
And we keep a calendar of events, oh, sorry. I just was going to add, I'm Katie Epler, Executive Director of the RTPB, and I just was going to add that we keep a calendar of events and try to get not only city things, but as Neil said, private business things on there too, when there's a good band at Local Roots, or the Goat Yoga's coming up, and so like, all of those things, we try to keep up on our event calendar as well. To promote all those Richfield events.
Great.
And Katie and I meet, the Executive Director of the RTPB and me meet pretty regularly. We have each other's contact info. We text, we call, you know, if she has questions, or I have questions, we're, we're not shy at, you know, coordinating different things.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I just want to clarify, because President Waziski used the word abscond, and I wasn't suggesting that at all, I just want to be clear, that anybody would abscond, I, with any money. What I was suggesting is that if the board currently understands its mission, like you said, heads in beds. So for example, when we had the Best Burb campaign, there was initially not funds for that, and we had to, to go back a couple times to say, oh, maybe promoting billboards that are not hotels are part of our mission. And so my, my concern is not that it would abscond, but that it would see its mission as distinct, and simply change the bylaws to continue to execute on that mission in a way that would no longer give the city access to those funds. So there wouldn't be any insurance claim. It would just be a different understanding of the mission and a modification of the bylaws to conform with that mission. And so if, if you were willing to, to clarify on the record that, that the board would not do anything like that, that would, I think that would just put my mind at ease.
So, so bylaws aside, we also have an agreement that we would be breaching should we make that change. There's, there's no intent on the part of the Tourism Bureau to create, essentially, we are the product of what the city created. The city created the Tourism Bureau, the city created the bylaws, the city attorney at the time wrote the bylaws, the city attorney at the time wrote the underlying agreement that gave rise to this. It wasn't as though it was two separate entities. Essentially, the city birthed a nonprofit for the purpose of promoting the city. We fully intend to continue in that capacity. There, there is, there's no reason for us to-
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Troutman and President Waziski. I do not want us to go down a rabbit hole. I think it's pretty clear, not one person has said that this agreement does not need to be updated. I've heard every single person say, yes, we should move forward in updating this agreement. And I think you have the direction that you need, City Manager Rodriguez. Are there any last questions from the city council on this? And you have the direction you need to move forward?
Thank you, Mayor.
And I appreciate the work of our President Waziski and Katie Epler, and the work that you've been doing as well, Neil. We are going through an amazing period of growth and renewal, and this is a great opportunity to look at how we can continue promoting our city. Councilmember Garcia, is this like a good and final comment on this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just think we should acknowledge that Lisa Rudolph will be on the board, and we expect for her to do good things for us.
Absolutely. We are very excited. We are very excited Lisa's on the board. Great. Thank you, everybody, and with that, I adjourn this study session. Thank you.